Test one, two. Testing one, two.
Okay, everyone. Good evening. Welcome to the Gilbert Town Council meeting for April 2nd, 2024. I will call this meeting to order and invite Sherri Candland from the Stake Relief Society President for the Gilbert Stake in the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints to offer an invocation this evening. So nice to see friends, Sherri. Thanks for joining us. You'll just need to push, I think it's the button on the left, on the bottom there. Maybe the other one. It'll turn red. There you go. Thank you.
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful to be gathered here this evening. We're grateful for the wonderful community in which we live. We express our appreciation for these elected officials that make decisions on behalf of our town and community. We humbly ask Thys, Spirit of inspiration, to be with them, that they will be guided to make decisions for our town of Gilbert that we love. We pray that they will look at the long term and the future of our community and the residents who live here and the effects that it will have on them. We are grateful for all that Thou has given to us. We are grateful for this free country that we live in, and we thank Thee for those who have fought and who have sacrificed to give us the freedoms that we enjoy. We again ask for guidance and direction and Thy Spirit to be with these council members and our mayor, and we say these things in the name of Thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Sherri. So nice to see you. And I just want to say hello to your husband, James Candland, who served here as a council member with me and Gilbert here in 2016. Nice to see you. Thanks for joining us this evening. I'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Kaprowski, if you could please lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now I'll ask our town clerk, Herrera, to please call the roll.
Mayor Bridget Peterson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Chuck Bon Giovanni.
Here.
Councilmember Bobby Buckley.
Here.
Councilmember Young Kaprowski.
Here.
Councilmember Kathy Tilke.
Here.
And Councilmember Jim Torgerson.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you so much, Chevelli. Moving on to our Presentations and Proclamations portion of our agenda. Our first proclamation will be presented by Councilmember Bon Giovanni. It is to declare April 2024 as Autism Awareness Month, and members of the Clerk's Office, Parks and Rec Department, Police Department, and Fire Department, please come down and join Councilmember Bon Giovanni. The reason that these four departments have been asked to come and join our council members is because all four of these departments are autism-certified here in the town of Gilbert.
Y'all sound so far away from me. Okay, whereas autism spectrum disorder, ASD, is a developmental disability that causes social, communication, and behavioral challenges. The learning, thinking, and problem-solving abilities of people with ASD can range from gifted to severely challenged. And whereas autism is the fastest-growing developmental disorder in the United States, and whereas research shows that early intervention and early identification and intervention services can improve a child's development. Services can include therapies to help a child talk, walk, interact with others, communicate, and control behaviors, including physical aggression and self-injury behavior. And whereas during the month of April, Gilbert supports all efforts to promote autism awareness and ensure that each person with ASD is provided an opportunity to achieve the highest possible quality of life. And whereas the town of Gilbert, Arizona, is committed to meeting the needs of the community and thus providing ASD training for our firefighters, police officers, Parks and Recreation, and Clerk's Office professionals to support successful community interaction. And now therefore, I, Chuck Bon Giovanni, on behalf of Bridget Peterson, Mayor of the town of Gilbert, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 as Autism Awareness Month in Gilbert, Arizona. And I encourage our organization and community to continue working together to ensure the community remains the community to live, work, and play.
The next proclamation is declaring April 2024 as National Volunteer Month. I will be headed down to the floor to present to members of boards and commissions. If Melanie Dykstra could please join me, and any members of boards and commissions that are here this evening, please come on down and join me. Well, your name's on it, so I know she does. The staff for the town of Gilbert always hates to be recognized, and that's why we purposely call them down to the front, so that they have to be. Thanks for being here, everybody. It's so nice to see all of you. So April is National Volunteer Month, whereas volunteers are one of our community's greatest assets, continuing to give back by volunteering with the Gilbert Police, Fire and Rescue, and Parks and Recreation Departments, as well as by serving on numerous boards, commissions, committees, foundations, and nonprofit organizations. And whereas Gilbert volunteers perform duties vital to Gilbert's success, which includes supporting special events and activities, helping to maintain parks and facilities, assisting with public safety efforts, helping to support nonprofit, military, veteran, and senior programs and activities, as well as advising the town council through Gilbert's boards and commissions. And whereas the Gilbert Town Council is proud of and thankful for the volunteers that serve our community, and whereas volunteering is vital to our future as a caring and productive nation, state, and town. And whereas in 2023, the town's volunteers donated more than 9,500 hours to serving this organization and community. And now therefore, I, Bridget Peterson, Mayor of the town of Gilbert, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 as National Volunteer Month in Gilbert, Arizona. And I encourage members of our community to give back by volunteering and thank all of our volunteers for your commitment and dedication to Gilbert. I'd like to let all of you introduce yourselves individually and tell us which board-commission task force that you're a part of. And Melanie, what you do for the town of Gilbert?
I'm Melanie Dykstra. I'm the volunteer and community resources manager, and I have the privilege of working with many of our task force, but also trying to encourage volunteerism in Gilbert. So if you are interested in being involved, reach out, and we'd love to get you connected.
I'm Suzanne Lent, and I serve on the Community Engagement Task Force.
I'm Louis DeGravina, and I serve on the Planning Commission.
Eric McCleskey and I serve on the Public Works Advisory Board.
My name is Charles Dine, and I serve on the Veterans Advisory Board. Come on down, visit one of our board meetings. We'd love to see you there.
I'm Pamela Reinsmith, and I'm also a part of the Gilbert Veteran Advisory Board and the pillar lead for the USS Arizona.
Les Prisemek, also a member of the Veterans Advisory Board.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember. I'm Kevin DeRosa, and I serve on the Industrial Development Authority.
Thank you all for everything that you do. And for those in the audience, all of these council members and myself serve as liaisons to the boards, commissions, and committees that we have here in the town. So I happen to serve with the Veterans Advisory Board. Councilmember Tilke serves with Community Engagement Task Force. Councilmember Bon Giovanni's with Parks. Councilmember Kaprowski's with Public Works. Vice Mayor Anderson is with the Planning Commission. Councilmember Torgerson is with the Redevelopment Commission. Boy, that was good. Councilmember Buckley is with Tourism, right? You always talk about tourism at the end of the meetings. So we really appreciate the work that our volunteers do here in our community, and thank you for everything. We wouldn't be able to do it without you. Now, next year, and I won't be here, but next year, we should equate these hours to FTEs, like how many full-time employees it would take for this much volunteer work that you get from these great volunteers. Let's take a photo. Melanie has items for you out in the lobby. Thank you all. Thanks for being here. Next up, we have proclamation declaring April 2024 as Fair Housing Month, and I'll invite Councilmember Buckley to present to Linda Ayers, who is a town of Gilbert employee.
So this is Fair Housing Month 2024, whereas the Civil Rights Act of 1968, the Fair Housing Act, and the Fair Housing Amendments Act of 1988 ensure full and fair access opportunities to housing. And whereas shelter is a basic human need, and when shelter is denied, the quality of human life is greatly diminished. And whereas people must not be denied equal access to and enjoyment of housing because of race, color, national origin, religion, sex, disability, or familial status. And whereas the town of Gilbert recognizes and values the efforts of those who seek to reduce barriers to full and fair housing opportunities. And whereas April is designated as Fair Housing Month. Now therefore, I, Bobby Buckley, council member, on behalf of Bridget Peterson, Mayor of the town of Gilbert, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 as Fair Housing Month in Gilbert, Arizona, and I encourage Gilbert to ensure equal housing opportunities exist and remain protected in our own community. There you go. And here, I'll take this.
Next, we have a proclamation declaring April 2024 as Water Wise Month. Vice Mayor Anderson will present. Jeremiah Churchill handing out presentation. Awardees will be invited to the front. If you are here for Water Wise Month, please come on down and join the Vice Mayor and Jeremiah at the front.
Hey, we just had a discussion a few minutes ago about the importance of air quality in the region, but we can't forget the importance of water in the region also. And a large part of our portfolio here in Gilbert is conservation. And thanks to groups like these, we're able to do quite a conservation effort. It goes towards, as a matter of fact, in the valley itself, conservation has done such a good job. I think it's, our population has increased by, I don't know how many millions since 2000, and we're using less water or the same amount of water as we did in 2000. So congratulations to all. Let me read this proclamation. Gilbert's Water Wise Month 2024, whereas water is the most precious natural resource, and most especially within the desert. And whereas the stewardship of Gilbert's water resources and its balanced and responsible use lies with the town council, town staff, residents, businesses, and stakeholders. And whereas Gilbert's Office of Water Resources and Conservation implemented many water efficiency programs that aid Gilbert's residents, businesses, and other organizations with conservation of water. Whereas every water conservation effort makes a difference in the sustainability of this precious natural resource, and a great number of participants have completed the necessary steps of becoming more water-efficient. Now therefore, Bridget Peterson, Mayor of the town of Gilbert, does proclaim April 2024 as Gilbert Water Wise Month. And we honor 133 recipients, of which there's a representation here tonight that have participated in that. Congratulations. Thank you very much. I think Jeremiah, you have a presentation.
Do a photo.
Is this on?
Yep, and the light goes right up.
I guess they wanted me to talk on the microphone. How about you? You want to go, Jeremiah?
I just wanted to say just how important what this program is and what it does. So if you're out in your community and you see that sign right there, it's important to know the commitment that all of these HOAs, businesses, churches, parks, the commitment they made to use water efficiently. Throughout Arizona, we see that Arizonians water two to five times more than what is needed. And all of these members here have took this challenge head-on and have made the commitment to water efficiently. And as you see here, we have 133 out of 319 members that are here and receive this award today. So I just wanted to say thank you, and what you do is important. And when you leave here today, you should know that. So thank you. Jeff, if you wanted to?
I think you got it.
All right. So we're just going to run through this. So these are our year nine members and our year eight members. Let me give you a second to look it over. Seven and six years. That's quite the commitment. Our five-year members. Our four-years. Hopefully you all see one of your HOAs in there, or parks, or schools. Three-years. You got one? Our two-years. And we have a bunch who are new this year, who we hope to see again next year. So again, your commitment helped save 318 million gallons of water. Thank you.
Thank you all. Great work on that. Water is such an important resource for all of us. We appreciate your work. Next on our agenda, we will be moving to communications from citizens. Vice Mayor Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. The Gilbert Town Council values citizens' comments and input. Anyone wishing to speak before the council must fill out a Request to Speak card for each item they wish to speak on and submit it to the town clerk or place it in the bin provided prior to the start of the meeting. The communications from citizens portion on the agenda provides citizens an opportunity to identify for the town council matters of interest or concern related to town government. Under the provisions of the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the town council is prohibited from responding to issues that have not been properly noticed. Therefore, the town council may only listen to citizens who wish to address them, and at the conclusion of open call to the public response is limited to individual members of the council responding to criticism made by those who have addressed the public body, asking staff to review a matter, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. While we understand and appreciate the passion our community members bring to these sessions, we must remind everyone that clapping during the meeting is not acceptable. This practice can disrupt the flow of discussion, potentially intimidate others, and detract from the respectful atmosphere we strive to maintain. The town asks that when your name is called, you come forward to the podium, state your name and place of residence, and then begin speaking. You will have three minutes to speak. First up tonight is Casey Kendall. Casey will be followed by Bridget Vega.
Good evening, Mayor, Town Council staff. Casey Kendall, Gilbert resident, Chair of the Redevelopment Commission for the Heritage District for downtown Gilbert. Thank you for having me. Thank you for having me. The Claire House, also known as Bergy's, located at 309 North Gilbert Road, is the second oldest building in Gilbert and was recently sold to a private corporation with plans to develop it into a nightclub or bar. The new building plans were presented to my commission and approved unanimously per the Heritage District Development Plan. This means that the current structure will be demolished and a new building be erected in its place. Built in 1918 by Forrest Clair, it served as his sheet metal shop and his home on the east side of Main Street now known as Gilbert Road. The business operated there for nearly 60 years before the shop was torn down. What remains is the Claire Residence, which we call the Claire House. Unfortunately, the property was never registered under the state, under the Arizona State Register of Historic Places or the National Register of Historic Places and is set to be demolished on May 15, 2024. As residents, we have a unique opportunity to protect the Claire House and our town's history by moving the actual building to HD South, the home of the Gilbert Museum, but we must act fast. Our plan to move the Claire House is aggressive and expensive. On behalf of HD South Director Denise Lopez and myself, we are asking the assistance of the council, staff, local businesses, and Gilbert residents to help us save our history and save the Claire House. We need to raise roughly $135,000 to cover the expense of safely moving the structure the half a mile to the location at HD South. This would, this would create a permanent foundation for the house, bringing it up to code for safe viewing and leave enough money for continued maintenance. When the announcement of Bergy's, of the Bergy sale happened, it sent outrage throughout our community. And there was a call of action from concerned residents about the nature of the planned business. There's nothing that can be done about that business. However, we can turn this into a positive and protect our history and preserve the second oldest building and place it next to the oldest building in Gilbert, HD South. Donations can be made to HD South website at www.hdsouth.org. You can select donate and give today, indicating that it is reserved for the Claire House. We're also, excuse me, we will also be sharing this message on social media. Please help us hashtag SaveTheClaire2024. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Casey. Bridget Vega. Bridget will be followed by Susie Jackson. Push, push the button, Bridget.
I didn't have to do that before. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's been five months since Preston was brutally assaulted and murdered, yet still no action by the leaders to create a safe space for the community, especially the children. We must confront the uncomfortable truths within our communities. We cannot turn a blind eye to teen violence nor the struggles our teens face every day. Tonight, I want to shine the light on a couple uncomfortable truths that have the community concerned. Since the Teen Violence Committee has come to an end, after months of gathering solutions, it's time for our leaders to rise up and take immediate action. Let's start by implementing Connor Johnigan's No Brass Knuckle Bill by creating a city ordinance. Due to public information as a community, we are concerned that Rick Keener's case was shelved due to preferential treatment that Ms. Solberg teaches at Perry. We are demanding an immediate internal investigation by a third party to look at each and every single case to see if preferential treatment was given to the administration at Perry that failed Tristan Keener and that allowed all of this to happen. We have no future if we don't protect the children. We have a duty to protect the innocent. If not, that blood is on our hands. Please continue to keep the Lord family in your prayers. If we can take a moment of silence for Preston Lord and for the teens who've been assaulted mentally, physically, and sexually, as well as all of the youth that was wrongfully murdered due to senseless acts of violence.
Thank you. We demand justice for the youth.
Thank you. Susie Jackson. Susie will be followed by Stacy Lavelle.
Good evening, Mayor Peterson, Vice Mayor Anderson, and members of the council. My name is Susie Jackson. I have been a Gilbert resident for about 21 years. First, I just would like to just speak on behalf of saying how much I appreciate how much the community has come together to support Preston Lord's family and recognize the violence that has really hit this community and be able to lend some support to that family during this extremely difficult time. What's brought me here tonight is speaking on behalf of my friend Kim Hansen. Her daughter was murdered almost two years ago here in Gilbert. She was shot near the Santan Mall area in her apartment while she slept. And this has obviously been a very horrific experience for the family. This has been something that they've had to navigate alone. They've haven't had quite the same support as what I would hope from, from our town council, from our, our community, from our police department to really find justice for them. I think we live in a community where Gilbert is safe and we want people to believe it's safe. We want people to come here and understand that it's safe, but when we have things that are happening like this that aren't being shared and aren't being acknowledged and answers for the family, then it is concerning. It's concerning to me. I have a lot of children. We have 11 of them right now and we're a foster and adoptive family. And it's concerning when you hear stories of Gilbert goons and things and then, you know, my dear friend, that they've been, you know, having to navigate this alone. So I would, I would like to encourage the entire council to really look into this case as well. Reach out to this family, hold our police department, you know, accountable on a level of finding out where we are with the investigation to bring Rachel some justice and to make sure that our community is truly safe and it's not just quietly safe or a pretend safe, that we are working together to, to make sure that this family feels it, that Preston's family feels it, and every other family that is a victim to violence in the community. Thank you for your service and I, I hope you are able to hear me tonight and, and we see some action taken on behalf of these families. Thank you.
Thank you. Stacy Lavelle. Stacy will be followed by Steve Lavelle.
Hi, good evening. My name is Stacy Lavelle. I live here in Gilbert. My husband Steve and I recently had a conversation with a friend about the issues plaguing the town and our efforts to bring to light the unethical practices and targeting of employees by upper management and the spying on employees by the digital media team. During our discussion, we were told that maybe my husband should be a little less passionate, that maybe the council would be open to what he has to say if he was just a little less excited when he speaks. Let me share with you and enlighten you as to why he speaks with excitement in his voice and passion in his heart when he stands up here, providing you with facts, not misinformation that you speak of. My husband was a 20-year firefighter here in Gilbert, well-liked and highly respected. He loved his career, loved and supported his fellow firefighters, and during his career consistently put his own interests to the side for the benefit of the whole, always trying to see the big picture, putting his crew first and never asking them to do something he wasn't willing to do himself. Here's my point. When my husband was written up for saying black coffee during a retirement all call, he was called to the fire admin office while he was on shift working on a fire truck to meet with Bob Badgett. During this meeting to discuss how they were going to handle this black coffee comment and possible discipline, Bob didn't like the way the meeting was going, got frustrated, pounded his fist on the table, and put my husband on paid administrative leave with no direction or instructions. The only instruction he was given was that he was not allowed in any fire station unless it was a medical emergency. He also told Steve he would need to wait for his supervisor before going into the station to collect his personal belongings that day. Once he collected his personal belongings from the station, supervised, they sent him home, pulled him off the truck. When they tried to contact Steve days later to no avail, Rob Duggan sent three police officers to our home, not once, but twice, to do a supposed welfare check. Yet, as his wife and emergency contact, I was never contacted. The next day, my husband received a text message from a coworker informing him that he had been fired. This coworker had received an internal fire department email informing them that Steve was no longer an employee. When did my husband find out from the fire department he'd been terminated? Six days later, in a letter sent via USPS mail. So when he stands up here and speaks with passion, and maybe you hear anger in his voice, it's because he was robbed of the remaining years he was planning to work until he retired. He was robbed of ever working on a fire truck again. He was robbed of a proper traditional fire retirement that a 20-year employee who started as a firefighter promoted to engineer, then later promoted to captain deserves. He was pulled off the truck to attend a meeting, put on paid administrative leave that same day, then later terminated. He never got to spend his last night in the firehouse. He was never given the opportunity to say goodbye to his crew. So when he speaks about the issues that you are choosing to turn a blind eye to, think about how you would feel in his position. Thank you.
Do we need to remind my first comments about clapping? Thank you. Steve? Steve will be followed by Christina Curso.
I'm sorry.
He was just calling up the next speaker.
Sorry, my apologies. Tonight, I'd like to talk about the top two leaders in our fire department, Rob Duggan and Bob Badgett, your nationwide search on the most qualified candidate to be Rob, knowing the members of the fire department didn't approve and wanted to go outside the department. We know that Leah Reineheimer, or excuse me, Leah Hubbard Reineheimer, an unserved civilian, is the assistant town manager over the public safety, and that our public safety sector is obviously a mess right now. In an email, Bob Badgett references a meeting with Kylie Crawford Tenbrook of Pierce Coleman LLC regarding the comments made by Josh Reynolds to Rob Duggan when Rob dressed up like Buddy Elf and the O D G posted on the town website. Rob, you had to expect some ribbing. You worked in the fire department. By the way, congratulations on your weight loss. Rob, anyway, Kylie stated that the post attacking the weight of another employee was not protected. So Bob Badgett decided to start disciplinary process against Josh, but of course, Rob didn't do anything about that. I'm guessing it's because it wasn't good for his career. Back when Rob was a captain, he was at Station One at shift change. There was at least 30 people in there and one of the probationary firefighters was coming, he was coming off probation. And that's a big deal in the fire department when you come off probation because it's kind of like a passage, a rite of passage. Well, Rob decided to throw a weight scale down on the ground in front of that firefighter and ask him to step on the scale, said, "We want to see how much weight you're going to gain in the next year." I guess he can joke about it, but my engineer can't. I guess he can't take it. So during COVID, I want to do another issue. The fire department was ill-prepared and didn't have another, enough N95 masks for their personnel to wear. Rob and Bob decided it would best to put those masks inside the drug vending machines where we pull our medications from. That way, they could track the inventory, they told everybody. All the additional personal protective equipment was placed in a cage and managed by, by Rob, who tracked and forced employees to sign for that equipment. I guess they trust us inside the civilians, the citizens' houses, but they don't trust us in our own resource department. With that said, let me find out where is that there. I know a crew that ran a call in the facility called CBI. We go there frequently. They made a decision to draw N95s for their personal protection and they wore them on that call. I guess they weren't just using that for inventory control because Bob Badgett came screaming down from Scottsdale into that station because they wore N95s on a call that he didn't think warranted N95 masks. This was a man sitting at home during the middle of a so-called plandemic, while all these men and women on the fire trucks were still responding on calls not just COVID-related, but also related to heart attacks, tuberculosis, chest pains, MVAs, and whatever else we want to talk about. But he came down there and he kicked that captain out of the station that day, sent him home, told him to leave, making a decision for him. He didn't go through no personnel process. He didn't, he didn't write him up. He didn't follow the town's policies. He sent him home. Well, I'll be done in one quick second here. Okay? So that captain followed the town policies and submitted his policy violation complaint form to Human Resources, run by Nathan Williams, of course. The town refused to address his grievance. No due process was given, no investigation was conducted, and no apology was ever given to that captain and his crew. And I have a bunch of stuff I'd like to talk about, but it was asked of me about what it will take for this to end. And I don't know exactly what that is, but I am going to chase the Marxist ideology, ideology that he's allowed into this city and this town. I'm going to chase it out of here. I'm not going to stop until it's gone. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Please. Christina Curso. Christine will be followed by Chris Brennan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Christina Curso, 17-year resident of Gilbert. And I watched the offices of Digital Government study session this evening and plan to come tonight, but I have a few things to say about it. After listening to the presentation that was made by staffer, by Patrick, I just want to highlight that it's really important not just to list all the accolades, but also what, what training, not, not just the Bloomberg program, but the training that this office goes through. Because government is supposed to be benign to politics, right? It's okay to have Gilbert kindness and be virtuous and good people and highlight good things, but to be able to focus on things that are political is, is, is not healthy. We can, and I don't mean Republican, Democrat, I just mean things that are even political, not party-related. I bring that up because we still have the Water Tower Program, which you've heard me talk about for years at this very podium, that has never been voted on by any of you. It's a program that is to light the water tower, nonprofits, you know, all these different nonprofits on both sides of political spectrums are, people are upset about, you know, we're supposed to be benign to this. So I'm asking you tonight, as a council, if the mayor doesn't, you know, three of you, to bring that to the dais and for you as a council to vote on that program, because I was told it's just a town program that was never voted on. I also want to mention how disappointed I was at the disrespect, Madam Mayor, that you showed a council member on this dais tonight, a few hours ago. To say he should pull himself up by his big girl panties and move on is embarrassing. I mean, we have to be respectful here. I would ask that you be respectful. Every one of you is elected, whether or not individual people voted for you or not. And I really think that there was so much kind of just shoved under the rug tonight because the staff brought a presentation on the Office of Digital Government that does have problems. We all know that. And yet, we move on because, oh, it all sounds good. You know, the staff brings forward things to highlight things. A mission statement I haven't been able to find in five years, looking at the town website. Now I've seen it. Thank you for bringing that up tonight. I appreciate it. But this Office of Digital Government needs to be benign like all of government when it comes to politics, whether or not it's rainbow towers or walking in parades and highlighting all these things. Let's get back to honoring police officers lighting the tower when it comes to them passing away or the young man in our community passing away. Valentine's Day, things that are benign. So I ask that you take the time to really consider that and also in a respectful way. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Brennan. Chris will be followed by Angela Rogers.
Good evening. I stand before you, oh, sorry. I stand before you today to address two critical issues that demand our attention and our attention. I stand before you today to address two critical issues that demand our attention and our action. Firstly, I urge the council to consider the safety and well-being of our youth by enacting a measure to ban the possession and sale of brass knuckles to individuals under the age of 18. This is Connor Jarnigan's bill he is asking for you to approve. Brass knuckles are inherently dangerous weapons that can cause serious harm in the wrong hands. Children and teenagers should not be carrying weapons like this. They are not tools of self-defense. They have no use beyond escalating conflict and causing excessive harm to other people. You can't hunt with brass knuckles, and you don't practice shoot with them. They have no other use than to intimidate and harm other people. So please vote to get rid of brass knuckles in our community. By implementing this ban, we are taking a proactive step to prevent such weapons from falling into the hands of those who would use them to intimidate and harm our kids and youth. Secondly, regarding recent proposals to limit public comment sessions, I want to express our disagreement with such measures. Public input is the cornerstone of democracy, and it is crucial that all voices have the opportunity to be heard, regardless of the current issues we face. While we understand the need for efficiency, we must not stifle the democratic process by restricting public participation. Instead, we should seek ways to enhance the effectiveness of our meetings while still allowing ample time for our community members to express their concerns and ideas. In conclusion, I urge the council to take the decisive action and protect our youth by banning brass knuckles for those under 18 and to assure that public comment sessions remain open and accessible to all. Let us prioritize safety, democracy, and the well-being of our residents in Gilbert. And Mayor, I wasn't going to say anything to you, not tonight, but hearing the panties comment is embarrassing. I cannot believe you said that to anybody publicly. Please knock it off and get serious about our youth and do things for the youth and stop insulting people. Thank you.
Angela Rogers.
Hello? Can you hear me? Okay. Again, I'd like to really thank the town council members that worked with us the last few months on the teen violence subcommittee. You guys really did work with us and heard us, and I really did appreciate that. In recent times, we've seen our community strained, voices stifled, and tensions rise. It's a challenging moment that threatens the very unity and strength in Gilbert. When the concerns and grievances of our residents are overlooked or silenced, it doesn't stop the discontent, it only amplifies it. It's also a pivotal moment and opportunity for change and healing. Yes, there is anger, but it's not insurmountable. Anger can be a catalyst for growth, for dialogue, and for progress. It's a signal that something needs to be mended, not ignored. We urge the town council to engage more openly with its residents, to listen to the voices of the people. It's not about acknowledging the anger, but understanding its roots and working collaboratively towards solutions that reflect our community's needs and goals. By doing so, we do not just address the immediate friction, we strengthen our community. Together, we can overcome the challenges and emerge stronger with a sense of belonging and togetherness that defines the true spirit of Gilbert. We submitted our proposals, and I really do hope that you guys take a look at them. Any questions? We'd be more than happy to answer them. And I absolutely hope that you guys do vote for the brass knuckles. This is for our teens, and together, I think that we're going to be able to make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the communications, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'll ask Chief Solberg to come up and make a statement, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, members of the community. Mike Solberg, Chief of Police with Gilbert Police Department. I want to thank everyone for being here. And as mentioned, the walk last week, we had the opportunity to assist with that walk and provide support for those that were participating in the fifth month since Preston was killed. Preston's death was incredibly tragic, and I want to acknowledge there's a lot of emotion surrounding his death and the topic of teen violence, as we've heard. There is a much greater awareness in our community of the problem of teen violence and what might be some of the root causes, and we continue to work together to create meaningful and long-lasting solutions. Over the past three months, our community, many who are in this room here tonight, have provided ideas and recommendations to the council and to the teen violence subcommittee. This information has been important for us and has given us an opportunity not only to hear from you all, but to learn from you as well. If there is one thing our community needs to know, is that we are committed to continuing to build and strengthening our partnership between law enforcement, our schools, our parents, our businesses, to support our youth. We must work together to develop solutions that can help our youth feel assured that they can come forward to report acts of violence, and our department is committed to partnering in this effort. I mentioned a few updates last week, which I'll repeat tonight. Our investigation into the Gilbert goons is still an active investigation, and we hope to have that completed soon. Two weeks ago, we made two additional arrests related to group teen violence cases, and we now have made 29 arrests so far this year. We look forward to hearing from the teen subcommittee, recommendations to council at the next council meeting in two weeks, and together, we're looking forward to working with council and our community on bringing solutions to these problems. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Moving on to consent agenda, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we'd like to remove items number nine and number 26. With that, I'll make a motion that we approve items five, six, seven, eight, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, and 27.
I have a motion. Can I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion by Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Bon Giovanni. Please vote. Motion passes 7-0. Vice Mayor?
Item nine, Councilmember Kaprowski.
Thank you. I just wanted to talk about this item separately, because this is a topic that is of great importance to me, which is evaluation of the town's trail crossings. These are the trail crossings with arterial and collector roads. We've had previous studies, and this one is a continuation, an update of the previous study to identify improvements needed for other locations. It will also look at additional funding sources for these improvements. This year, we've seen people walking and biking and on motorcycles get affected by traffic violence or motor vehicle crashes. And I just want to bring some attention to that, because it's something that can be preventable and that everyone plays a part in. And with the mild weather in this April, I think it's really important to recognize that, to just look out for people that are walking and biking and on motorcycles in our community so that we can all stay safe and get home safely. So thank you.
Thank you. Well said. Can we get a motion for that item?
I'll make a motion to approve item nine. Can I have a second?
A motion by Councilmember Kaprowski, seconded by Councilmember Buckley. Please vote. Motion passes 7-0.
Item 26, Councilmember Torgerson.
I would just like to have a presentation on what any changes are from the previous year, discussion a little bit about the MRI inclusion.
Nathan, if you can just introduce yourself for the public, please.
Nathan Williams, Chief People Officer with Gilbert. Mayor Peterson, Vice Mayor Anderson, members of council, thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. We're going to be taking you through the presentation for our recommendations for premiums and plan design changes for the coming fiscal year related to our employee health care and benefits. I'm going to be introducing Sean Irule in just a moment. She's our total rewards manager. I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge the hard work between our total rewards team, our budget team, in concert with our health trust board, as well as our broker, Alliant, who we have Corey Dunn here tonight representing Alliant. Just want to take a moment to acknowledge the time and effort, the analysis, and the review that goes into these recommendations year after year. It is certainly a difficult process, and it is always our aim and our goal as a people team in this organization to do the best things we can for our workforce and for our employees, recognizing that we also have to be mindful of budgets and financial implications. So just wanted to kind of kick off with those points. I'll turn the time over to Sean. She'll take you through the kind of nuts and bolts, and then we'll all be available for any questions that may arise.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. The presentation that you're going to see tonight is very similar to the presentation that was given a couple of weeks ago at the council retreat, so I will try to make it as brief as possible in the interest of time and hitting on the specific topics that Councilmember Torgerson brought forward. So first, I wanted to just run through what it means to be self-insured. The town of Gilbert is self-insured for our health insurance, which means that we are the insurance provider. All of the premiums that are collected from the employee and the town contributions go into this health trust fund, and this is what we utilize to pay all of the claims and the administrative fees that are associated with operating our own health insurance. We do contract with different vendors to help us with administering the plans, and that does accumulate some administrative fees as well. This allows the town of Gilbert to have more control over the plans and to be able to tailor them to the needs of our organization. The reason that we are here tonight and making some recommendations to the plan as well as premium increases is because for the past several years, our revenues have not been keeping up with our expenses. A lot of this is due to several factors, including post-pandemic inflationary pressures as well as increase in pharmacy and new drugs that are coming to the market and available to our members. Just as a quick overview, the town's financial policy is that the health trust fund operates at a 30% fund balance, which means that we have to carry 30% of the funds in this account in order to pay the claims and have a sustainable plan for the future. As you can see, as we ended this current fiscal year, quarter two, we are approximately $2.5 million below what we would consider our comfortable fund balance of 30%. Again, why is that? We have had some conservative rate increases over the past several years, and unfortunately, those increases have just not kept up with the rising costs in medical and prescription claims that we're experiencing on our plan, as well as those post-pandemic inflationary pressures and higher drug costs. To try and help gauge what the town employees would like as part of our benefits program, we did introduce a total rewards survey that we sent out to the organization. We had 620 respondents, and of those, 80% believed that the town cares about the employees' well-being. 72% of those respondents indicated they were satisfied or very satisfied with the overall benefits package that the town offers to employees. And in that survey, we did ask questions about what employees might want to see as part of our benefits package, and 50% of those respondents did indicate that they would be interested in the town offering a high deductible health plan. To dive a little bit deeper into the survey response, we did ask the employees if healthcare costs have to increase. As we all know, just in society in general, inflation has taken over every aspect of our lives, and gases are more expensive, our gallon of milk and our eggs are more expensive, and healthcare is no different to that. So employees, although, did indicate that they would like to see those increases occur in their copayment services, such as their primary care visit copayments, their emergency rooms, their urgent care visits. You can see from that table off to the right-hand side that those increases to our copayments would be severely disruptive to members as they were going to utilize the services, but would not net a very much, a very high increase in our claims dollars, and therefore, staff felt like the disruption that would go along with making these types of changes was not something that we wanted to bring forward to council to consider tonight. Some of the things that we did look at in conjunction with our benefits broker, Alliant, as well as staff, looking at our plan design and the responses from the survey that we put out, is transitioning to a three-tier rate structure. So currently, our plan only has two tiers. We have employee-only, and we have employee-plus-family. So what that means is if an employee is only covering a spouse on their plan, or if they're only covering one child or children under the plan, they are lumped into that employee-plus-family rate tier. The recommendation for this upcoming plan year is to transition that to a three-tier rate structure, which would then introduce a second tier for an employee plus one. So if the employee is only covering one child, or if they're covering a spouse, they would then be able to avail themselves to that tier of coverage. In going along with the recommendation from the benefit survey and looking into our plan design, we are making a recommendation to implement a high deductible health plan with a health savings account. The plan design for the high deductible health plan, you can see on the screen there, it is exactly what the name of the plan is. It is a higher deductible in exchange for a lower premium cost. A member would be responsible for hitting their entire deductible before the plan starts paying anything towards their claims. And that would include pharmacy claims as well. So if an individual were to get a prescription, they would have to go to the pharmacy, they would pay 100% of that charge until they reach their deductible, and then it would switch to that second box, which there is that co-insurance. The plan does also carry a slightly higher maximum out-of-pocket than our current two plans offer as well, and we'll get, there's a slide that'll show you the comparison between all of our plans. So this one here is just, again, just doing a very high-level medical plan comparison. The broad network, which we refer to as our preferred plan, and our narrow network are both the plans that we currently offer today, as well as that high deductible health plan. There are no benefit plan design changes that go along with these recommendations, and there are no changes to what is either covered or not covered in our plans. The only thing that is being recommended is the addition of that additional option of the plan of a high deductible health plan. Does that help answer your question, Councilmember Torgerson?
Sorry. I wanted to see what was being included in this as opposed to last year, as far as things that are covered or things that are offered, whether it be preventative MRIs or specific surgeries or whatever that's included that hasn't been included in past packages.
So the only thing that is being recommended that has not been included in the prior plan design is this preventative MRI program, which is similar to the program that the fire department rolled out for their members, where an individual could go and avail themselves to a preventative MRI, which is a total body scan, which helps early detection of things like cancer, growth, tumors, things like that. And we all know that if any of those things are caught early in the stages of development, they are a lot less costly to treat, and the survivability of that individual is much greater. This preventative MRI would be offered to benefit eligible employees 45 and up with a cost sharing of 80/20. So the plan would pick up 80% of that cost, the member would be responsible for 20%. And we have been successful in negotiating a contract with Banner to offer these total body MRIs at a cost of $700 per scan, which when we went out to the market and we're looking at other standalone providers that offered these types of preventative screenings, they're charging anywhere from about $2,500 to $3,500, and there would be no additional coverage for those outside of this particular program because of the way that that contract... coverage for those outside of this particular program because of the way that that contract would be written.
Excellent. So if they scanned me and discovered I was developing a heart or something, they would... All right. Thank you.
So another recommendation that we are making is on our Banner Select Plan, which is our plan that does have that narrower network of providers. Historically, when the plans were set up, the town took 80% of the higher premium plan, which was the preferred plan, and then they transferred that dollar figure over into the Banner Select Plan, which ultimately resulted in the town subsidizing that plan at 90% and the member paying approximately 10% of that premium. The recommendation is to incrementally shift that plan back over to an 80/20 cost sharing, feathering that in over two fiscal years. So we're recommending for fiscal year '25, that contribution split be 85% for the town, 15% for the member. And again, next year, when we come back for recommendations, we will be requesting that that drop down to 80%. Town paid, 20% member paid. As far as prescription drugs, a couple of times you've heard me indicate that the pharmaceutical businesses are flourishing at this time, and our plan is really seeing the impacts of the new drugs that have come to market, as well as the increased cost in pharmacy spend. Over the last year, our prescription drug costs have increased about 10%, which is not anything that any other plan is not experiencing. This is an issue for all plans across the nation. We are not unique in that we're seeing a higher increase in our pharmacy spend. Some of the things that we are going to be recommending, we are going to continue reviewing our formulary, which is the prescription drugs that our plan actually covers, as well as implementing some utilization guardrails and exploring options for generics to try and push some of those costs down into the more cost-effective drugs that are available on the market. Some of these things are going to take some time to review with our pharmacy benefit manager and implement, so we will notify and give plenty of notice to the members, especially those that are taking any of the drugs that might be affected by any of these changes, plenty of time to be able to get to their doctor and have a conversation about what they can switch to to continue to receive treatment for whatever current conditions that they have. So as a high-level overview for the rate recommendation, the red box that you're seeing there are the current rates that we have today in our two-tier structure. The grayed-out box is there because in our current plan, we don't have those levels of coverage or the high deductible health plan. Moving into the current, to the recommendation for the next upcoming year, fiscal year '25, this is accomplishing a couple of different things that we're trying to mitigate here. So obviously, this is including a transition to a three-tier rate structure. We are also trying to balance funding in our preferred plan, which is our broader network plan. And over the past couple of years, the revenues that we have been collecting for that plan have not been meeting the expenses. For the plan year of '23, we had approximately $16 million worth of claims in that plan and only brought in about $9.9 million in revenues. So our other plan is significantly subsidizing the preferred plan to continue to operate. So we are trying to level that off and will be over the next several years in order to make that plan self-sustaining. And then this also is feathering in that contribution split on the Banner Select Plan as well. The last thing here is just the difference in the employee rate for biweekly. We do take the deductions out of the employees' paychecks on a biweekly basis. So these are the increases that the employees would see out of their paychecks if they were to remain on the same plan that they are currently on. With offering the high deductible health plan, that particular plan is going to share the same network as the preferred of the broader network plan and include out-of-network coverage. So when we see issues that arise, such as our current negotiation from Aetna and Dignity Health, the high deductible health plan would be a plan that would be able to accomplish goals of offering coverage to members even for network providers that might not continue to be part of our provider network in the future, which we don't have any control of. That is particularly with the insurance carrier and the provider directly. Providers come and go out of the network quite frequently. We don't hear a whole lot about it unless if it's a big provider like Dignity or PCH, and then we start hearing about it. But we are hopeful that that negotiation is continuing and that Aetna and Dignity Health will be able to come to an agreement. They did extend our current contract until this Friday, so we are very hopeful that they will come to an agreement and continue to be in our network after that date. So just as another way to look at the rate structure here in a more cleaner version, this would be the employees' monthly cost for each of those different plans transitioning to the three-tier rate structure. One thing that you will note is that traditionally, a high deductible health plan is the lowest planned cost, lowest premium available to the employees, which will be the intent of the plans moving forward. However, as I had stated earlier, with the split contribution on the Banner Select Plan, staff didn't feel like it was financially feasible for employees to be able to switch that plan to a full 80/20 split in one year, so we are feathering that in over a couple of years. It is anticipated that next year, the high deductible health plan will be the cheapest plan available to employees. Did want to highlight our neighboring agencies and where Gilbert falls on that scale when it comes to our employee costs for our health insurance. So we typically compare our Banner Select Plan to the plan that is the most like that in other agencies. The cities that are listed across the bottom there, you will note that some of them do have asterisks on them. The asterisk cities are ones that have a 7-1 renewal, and at the time that we were putting the presentation together, those entities were not able to share what their recommendations will be for their councils. So these are the rates that are current. The other cities that are listed there without the asterisks, they renew on a January 1 basis, so we do have the most current and up-to-date information for those. So with this graph, you can see that Gilbert remains the fourth cheapest plan throughout our neighboring agencies when it comes to the Banner Select Plan employee-only premium. And then looking at the family plan, the Banner Select Plan with the Town of Gilbert is the third cheapest plan available. You will note that Mesa does have a plan that is completely covered by the city of Mesa, and that is the plan that utilizes their onsite clinic as a primary care physician office rather than having a traditional open network. Did you want to talk to these, or do you want me to keep going? Okay, and I will turn it over to Nathan.
Yeah, just in summary, a couple of the considerations that we're looking at. We've mentioned at the retreat, the implementation of a lifestyle spending account that would be something that we could make a contribution to for our workforce that would be to offset or mitigate some of the cost factors outside of kind of your standard medical cost. This would be something that would not be funded by the health fund itself, so it would not have an impact on overall healthcare costs. And then a few other things that are coming that we have to continue to review. Really, I guess the way I would summarize this is everything's on the table. We recognize that it is a very difficult healthcare marketplace right now. You know, prices continue to rise. I know we had a discussion at the retreat that in the private sector, some organizations and entities are seeing 30% to 50% annual increases to their premiums. So while we recognize that these are significant increases for our workforce, we remain competitive, and we are committed to doing so. But we will be looking at plan design, we will be looking at our prescription program, and we will be putting out an RFP to continue to look at administrative services. So, you know, whether it be the network or our administrators, whatever it may be, we are open to exploring every avenue and option. And then just as, you know, one of the discussions that we've had in, I guess, ad nauseam has been, we have to ensure that our workforce is as informed as possible when it comes to making decisions for their healthcare needs. And so we have a pretty extensive strategy built out with weekly communications, with sort of focus groups and town hall formats to have opportunities to engage with our workforce. Our Alliant, our broker, has offered to assist in this process. We're going to be working on a pretty exhaustive and extensive campaign. We want to make sure that if people are making planned changes for their own healthcare needs, that they are well-informed before they make those changes, and they understand the pros, cons, the benefits, and various factors for all of the different plans and plan designs. And that is the conclusion. So maybe I'll stay put if there's any preliminary questions, and then Sean will be my subject matter expert if I need to pull her back.
Thanks, Nathan. Any comments, questions for Nathan or Sean? I think we had a long discussion at the retreat about this topic. It's not an easy decision, and I know everyone's healthcare goes up every year. I know mine did through my husband's company, and they're self-insured also, I mentioned at the retreat too. So I don't see any, I don't see anybody turning their mics on, Nathan, so thank you for that.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Sean, for all that information. Bringing it back to the dais for discussion or motion. Don't everybody jump.
Mayor?
Yes.
I want to thank the staff and the trust board and Alliant as well. I want to make sure I got that name right since they're new. This has really been hard conversations and trying to do the best we can to create a holistic benefit package for our employees. And it's very important to us, you know, as a council as well, that we provide benefits that are meaningful, and I think that the survey helped that. So with that acknowledgement, I'll make a motion to approve item number 26.
Thank you, Councilmember.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Councilmember Tilke, seconded by Councilmember Banjimani. Please vote. Motion passes 7-0. Now I've had a request to take a break, so we will recess the meeting for about five Okay, if I can just get 30 seconds, everybody back to your seats, please. Okay, if I can just get 30 seconds, everybody back to your seats, please. Thanks, everybody, for indulging us with a short recess. We'll get back to our here, our meetings now. We have a public hearing items next. The only thing that I ever had requested to speak about separately is item number 36, which is the code. I think everything else, so I'm going to open the public hearing. And on items 28 liquor license, 29 liquor license, 30 zoning, 31 property acquisition, 32 property acquisition, 33 property acquisition A and B, 34 property acquisition, 35 property acquisition, and close the public hearing. And I will move to approve all of those items if someone would like to second.
I'll second that.
So I have a motion by Mayor Peterson, seconded by councilmember Bon Giovanni. That motion passes 7-0. Now, we'll move to item 36, which is the code of Gilbert to conduct hearing and consider adoption of ordinance number 2898, amending the code of Gilbert, Arizona by amending Chapter 1, General Provisions, Article 2, Mayor and Council, Division 3, Rules of Order and Procedure, excuse me, related to council rules of order and procedure. Open the public hearing on item 36. And do we need a presentation from Chris? Chris, do you have anything that you would like to add on item 36? I know you passed out an updated copy this evening.
Yes, Mayor and Council, happy to do the presentation that we did before. Last time we talked about this was in the study session about a month ago, early March. There is a revised copy, just a couple little fixing a typo. You'll see the red line there.
Mm-hmm.
And the only other change, there were some numbering changes just for consistency purposes, was in section 188. Let me get back to where that is. I take that back, section 192 subsection D1, and then 192 F1I. Really what that's saying is where the, where the both sections say the same thing, and what it's saying is where there's going to be one spokesperson for a group of people that the mayor, the vice mayor, will read the names of all the people that they're speaking on their behalf of into the record. So we know if one person's going to speak for 10 minutes on behalf of five people, we have a record of all of them, their comments being entered in. Those are the only changes that are made in this revised draft.
Thank you, Chris. Anybody have questions? Councilmember Bon Giovanni, you have your mic on. Do you have questions?
No questions, just comment.
Just comments?
Yeah.
Great, then I guess I'll close the public hearing on item 36 and bring it back to the dais for discussion.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I know we went over this quite a bit in the study session, but sitting on it for a while, I had two concerns. Number one is in section, well, I want to do section, section at a time, right? Question at a time, okay. So section 19, 1-92, Order of Business, number two. I just, myself, I can't agree with going less than three minutes. If a lot of people want to speak, then either there, we have a significant issue going on in the town, or citizens are concerned about how we're doing our job and are we addressing those issues. Either way, I can't see how limiting their First Amendment rights makes sense. And I know it would take a lot of time, you know, we may go into the wee hours, but, you know, if a citizen wants to spend two hours telling me I'm doing a lousy job, I mean, I signed up for that. That's what, I'm here. I'm here to listen. If we go late in the hours and we get tired, we can easily take a recess, recharge, and then finish the meeting, or we schedule for another evening. I just, I just can't see how, you know, sacrificing First Amendment rights for individuals to balance our time. It just doesn't sit well with me. And I mentioned that during, during the study session also. So I'm just having a difficult time with not giving three minutes to any citizen that wants to speak to us.
Councilmember Buckley, you turned your mic on next.
I just want to say I agree 100% with what Chuck just said. I, I can't see limiting the time for less than three minutes. Not in agreement with that.
Councilmember Kaprowski.
Thank you for your comments and thoughts on that. I just wanted to bring up that for every instance in the past where we've had a lot of people come to speak on certain issues, we have actually followed up with listening sessions, more productive meetings where we can have two-way conversations. My challenge with this is that we can't respond during this time, and so when there are major issues, it is detracting from time that we need to address other items on the agenda so that we can then schedule those listening sessions or working groups with the public on whatever issue that is. So I think that for me, it's more of the fact that it's part of our council meeting and that I'd rather have a separate meeting where it's more productive, where it can be on an agenda, where we can actually speak more openly about a topic and try to resolve the issue. So that's why this was developed to try to maximize the time that we can have people speak, but also maximize the time that we can address issues on our agenda. When we look at other communities in the valley, they have much more stringent times, and I think that this gives a good balance of being generous, but also making sure that we have the right forum for the input and discussion, because I think it's so important for us to make sure that we are able to tackle the issues that are brought to us. And I agree, people can come and they can speak their, their piece, but the time commitment during this meeting is really important, and they can do that in a lot of other avenues or in other meetings as well.
Councilmember Torgason.
I agree with councilmembers Buckley and Bon Giovanni. I'm here to take the beating. It's okay with me to continue going forward with that.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
I think a good example of what councilmember Kaprowski's talking about is the subcommittee meetings that we had. We, when, everybody that's had a chance to speak tonight had specific things they wanted to say, but we found out that we received a lot more information, and rightfully so, at the subcommittee meeting. And I tried to not limit, put any time limit on it, because that's when a lot of information was revealed to us, handed in to us, and I think that's where the work is being done. And so I tend to agree that we, if we've got those special meetings, that's where we get that information that can't be revealed in two minutes or three minutes, either one.
Councilmember Bon Giovanni.
Thank you, Mayor. And Scott, or Vice Mayor, I agree with you that we got a lot done in those meetings, and we were able to go back and forth, and we had people talking for 10, 15 minutes, and I was totally cool with that. But we had to recognize there was a problem first in order for us to have those meetings, set up that task force. And citizens came forward, a number of them came forward and told us what their, what their issues were. And we, and in that time period, they needed to talk. So I don't want to shut them down to two minutes or one minute, because we have a lot of people. If enough people come here on the same issue, that might trigger us, hey, we need to do something to set up a task force or set up a, a subcommittee. But we've, we have to be willing to hear that from them first.
You're making my point exactly, is that it can be made in the timeframe of three minutes, but we follow it up with a longer timeframe.
Councilmember Buckley.
My, my issue with, and the subcommittees are great, and, and you guys did a fantastic job with, with what you had to deal with. My issue with that is not all council members can be involved in that. We, we didn't get to hear what everyone had to say. Only the three of you got to hear what they had to say. So the rest of us weren't able to hear that. So I, I still can't go along with changing this timeframe for them. I think they deserve to speak.
Councilmember Tilke.
Thanks, Mayor. I think we had a long conversation at our last meeting, and so we all had an opportunity to look at this. And I believe we've been keeping track of the number of slips we've been getting, and we've had a lot of speakers lately. And I don't believe we've ever, we've gone over the 20 yet since we've had the conversation. So this is a situation that is very far and few between. And so I would say for the Morrison Ranch issue, that, that we had a lot of people, a lot more than 20. And what happens sometimes is it's just repetition, and we want to hear from everybody, but to hear three minutes of the same thing, I'm not sure is as productive. You know, I can go either way on this, really. I mean, the fact that we very seldom have this many people, it, it, it's not going to be put into effect. But what this does, and one of the things we're trying to do, and we've been trying to do over a long period of time, is actually put the way we're handling meetings in writing so it's clear. So the public knows what to expect. Everybody up here knows what to expect. We're not trying to make decisions under pressure, and I think that, that was the key. So it's, it's to allow us, when we have a huge crowd, crowded people, to understand how we can best utilize their time and make sure that we're hearing what they're having to say as well. Also, the fact that we allow them to share time. That has been so inconsistent over the different councils, and I've been coming to council meetings for over 30 years. And so we want that to be consistent. Many times, people are uncomfortable having to come up to the podium, and then they, they have to, when they would rather have somebody speak on their behalf. So I think that we're trying to address all of that. Speaking of First Amendment rights, we have looked at this backwards and forwards, and we're not eliminating somebody's First Amendment rights by limiting time. That is something that we can do. And so that, that's not what we're trying to do. We want to hear from everybody. We're just trying to figure out how do we accommodate that many people coming in at one time to be productive for everybody, and so that they understand what they need to do. So it sounds to me that you have, Mayor, you have three people who are interested in removing that. So when we get to that portion of making a motion, I guess that will come up, unless people want to continue to talk about that issue. I think there's others that we can talk about as well.
Councilmember Torgason.
I wanted to, to take a look at 186-2, the requirement to first confer with the town manager provided in section 1, 1-91B. Further down, subject to the requirement, this is in 187, subject requirement to first confer with the town managers provided in 191B, those kinds of things. I'm not really comfortable with that. I, this has never been part of it until this point, and, you know, there, certainly there can be like, hey, we can't get anything together in time to have a substantive study session, and that would be up to the people asking. But I don't think that it needs to be set up to, basically, we go and ask permission. And I, it's just the way it reads to me, it's the way it feels to me. I'd like to strike that, and I probably will ask to strike that. 187, down there, subject to requirements, 186-2, so the requirement to first confer with the town manager provided in section 191B. I don't believe it shows up anywhere else, but if it does anywhere else, it shows up in the document, I'd like to remove it.
Are you finished, sir? Sorry.
I am finished, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kaprowski.
I just wanted to bring up a comment regarding, going back to the time for the communications from citizens. The way that it's currently worded kind of designs it so that communications from citizens is limited to about 75, 80 minutes. I think if we remove those formulas and allow that to be any time limit, we should consider moving up the public hearing to an earlier agenda item, just so that the individuals that are there for those items that they're doing business with the town, they have a more consistent time period to be heard. That'd be my only request from that point of view.
So you're asking for communications from citizens to be moved after public hearing, but removing the requirements that have been outlined in this policy?
No, I'm just saying that if it moves forward in that direction.
That's what you would request.
Public hear, I would request the public hearing be moved prior to communications from citizens.
Councilmember Torgason, could you shut your mic off, please? Sorry, sorry, sorry. I'm trying to keep track. Thank you. I'm trying to keep track. Councilmember Bon Giovanni.
Thank you, Mayor. I understand, I believe, what councilmember Torgason is saying, but I also understand that if we're asking for a study session with staff, they need time to prepare. So maybe we put in there that, you know, after, after three of us, or the mayor, or anyone asks for a study session, that Patrick has up to two meetings to, to present that. So staff, I don't want to put more pressure on staff to, you know, come up with something in two days, right? So I, I'm, I'm good with showing it, you know, showing it to Patrick and his team so they can prepare for it.
Councilmember Tilke.
Thank you, Mayor. The, the intent of that section, councilmember Torgason, is that by the requirement that if you put your three signatures, or the mayor has an item, that you meet with the town manager to understand what needs to be done from the staff perspective so that you can set the date. Instead of just saying, sign this, we're going to put it on the next meeting, we're not going to talk to anybody about it, they don't have any information about it, we don't have any information. It's more productive to make sure that they have, that they know what their homework is, what you're bringing forward, what the scope of work is. That's all that is. It's not eliminating your ability to put anything on the agenda. It's just so that we understand what your scope is that you want to accommodate, and then what they need to bring forward and how long that will take.
I believe Chuck addressed that very well by saying within two meetings.
And, yes, Patrick, I was just going to call.
Mayor, councilmember Torgason, members of the council. You know, we always strive to bring information forward in a timely manner, even setting up any type of arbitrary timeframe like two meetings. If this is something that requires research, or surveys, or bringing in consultants, it could take far longer than that. I'm open to any type of framework of understanding so that we know time is of the essence, but it just all depends on what the subject matter is as to how responsive we can be with it.
Thank you. Another, okay, I'm, I'm going to comment on the time limit. The time limit that we see in the policy right here is exactly what we've been doing other than setting a number of speakers. So we're trying to make it, during our study session when we discussed this, we were trying to find a way to make it more clear so that everyone on the dais and the public knew what the process would be if you attended a council meeting. And it really came from a council meeting that we had about two years ago where we had over 40 speakers, over 40 speakers, and we ended up not getting to the, one of the biggest items that we needed to talk about until 1:00 in the morning. And we had residents sitting here that needed to have a final decision on that item at 1:00 in the morning, and that is not fair to them. It's It's not fair to all of us. At about 10:00, we kind of all start to check out. You've had a long day already before you've come in for a meeting, starting at 4:30 this afternoon, for example. And so, we were trying to make this more clear for a process that we've already been doing for over 20 years here on the dais. And so, if the, if the council decides as a whole, I'm just trying to explain that this is what we've been doing. We're, we're just trying to make it clearer for everybody. But I agree with Councilmember Kaprowski. We have, we have projects that come in for public hearing that need to be heard in a timely fashion. And I, I hear what you're saying about, well, we'll just recess and come back. We can't just come back the next day. We have to have 24 hours to notice. And we have business to get done. The, technically, this meeting is a business meeting for this council because we can't speak and do any other business until we're all sitting here together. So, I just want you to keep that in mind.
I like Councilmember Kaprowski's suggestion on that. Because I remember that meeting, I was debating to order a pizza at 12:00 because it was a long night and I wasn't even on the council back then. But yeah, I, I, I understand that people need to be heard that are expecting to have business heard. And I'm okay with moving those forward if we see we have a, a lot of requests. But I'm, I'm still, I'm still dead set on three minutes.
Councilmember Tilke?
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to confirm again that the, the goal is to try to put into writing the way that we handle our meetings. And so, I appreciate all the work that's been going into it. You know, as, I know as you, as some of you have been thinking about the time limits, I've also been thinking about the order of business as well. And I do believe that we need to have those public hearings first and foremost. That is, that is the job of us, of us sitting up here is to get that business done and those consent agendas. And so, those usually go very quickly. And as you said, I, I don't want to see a situation where somebody, this was a very serious issue that dealt with property acquisition. And those people having to wait till 1:00 AM, that wasn't fair to them at all. So, I like Councilmember Kaprowski's recommendation that we remove the time limits, keep it at three, but also changing up the format so that it's consistent. I don't want to have to do this on the fly. I'd rather it be consistent so everybody knows what's going to happen before they get here. And that would be bringing those, that public hearing, and then the consent agenda, and then communications from citizens. I think we can get that done very quickly. And then that gives us the time to be able to hear from everybody for three minutes each. And if it's 40 or 50, that's what we'll sit through and, and listen to that. But that does allow us to conduct the, the business of the town as we are required to do so. I'm ready to make a motion, but before that, I'd like to make a comment, but I'd like to hear everybody before that, please.
Yeah, thank you. Before you make a motion, I, I don't know if anybody had-
I have another.
-other sections that they wanted to comment on. So, Councilmember Torgerson was next.
I was going to say, is there a way to monitor it? If there were more than 20 members of the public wishing to speak, that we would, at that point, delay it till after the agenda items?
Let's, let's make sure we use microphones so, so we can have it on the record, please. Thank you.
My concern with that is if we post that public hearing is going to happen and the consent items are going to happen, those people are going to be here expecting that to happen. They're paying their lawyers, they're paying their people to sit here to get that business done. And then we're going to change it on them.
I think you misunderstood what I said.
Well, you're wanting to change it if there's more than 20 and then we-
They can be put after the public hearings. If there's more than 20 people that wish to speak, instead of making people wait for hours, we bring the public hearings forward and move the consent agenda to after public hearings.
No, I understood you. I, I disagree with it though, because, again, what I want to make sure is that people understand what the order of business is, when they come, every time they come. And I don't want to have to change it up because we have a controversial issue. So, that's what I would prefer to do.
I agree with Councilmember Tilke. I think consistency is key and we are trying to, we're trying at this point to get this on paper so that everybody knows what to expect when they attend a meeting. And if we start to, we start to decide right now that it's going to be either or at that point, moving the items on the agenda. I know I've had in the past where we've had, and I'm going to use public hearing items for, for the best example, people that are involved in public hearing items in other communities and having to rush over here to get to ours. If they don't know when they're going to be on the agenda, that makes them a lot, a lot more difficult for them. And I'm using them because we have small businesses that come in here that are paying for attorneys to be, sit here for hours at a time during public hearing. And we're trying to alleviate that and get the business of the council done. So, I like the consistency that Councilmember Tilke is talking about. Next up is Councilmember Bon Giovanni.
Vice Mayor, were you going to bring up something different, or were, did you have a comment?
I just need to know what we're talking about. Are we talking about revising the agenda so that every agenda has a public hearings first and, and, okay.
What, what's being said is if we're going to leave the speaking time for communications at three minutes for every person that's going to come and speak, no matter how many, that to put communications after public hearings and consent.
Permanently. We're not going to juggle it at the meeting.
That, and that's what, that's what Councilmember Tilke and I are saying, is that consistency is important.
Yeah.
Councilmember Bon Giovanni, you're next.
Section 189, quorum, section A.
Well, I still have a question.
Yeah, you're next. I'm keeping, I'm keeping track.
Okay, I'm going back to where we were.
I, I, I want to be clear, I'm not talking about this council, but sometimes we make decisions for people 10 years from now. So, my concern is this, you know, I was elected to this seat, I earned to be sitting here, and I don't want four people to tell me that I can leave. Because if you think about it, there may be a vote at the end of the night that's important. And if I get kicked out in the first vote, I don't get to put my input or my vote on something else that may be important. And I, I don't think that four of us have a right to kick someone off a meeting. The, the citizens want to kick us out, they don't vote for us again. But I don't like the idea of, you could, I mean, someone could make this pretty strategic. Big vote last, let's do the count who I think is going to vote for that, let's get this person out before that vote. So, I'm, I'm dead set against having someone take my, take my seat for a meeting.
He's talking expulsion. It's actually 190A, the new A. 190, the new A.
Yeah.
I'm correct, correct? Yes. Sorry. Sorry, it's new section A because A was cut out and so it's the new section A. Sorry. Correct. The, the part, it's new is in all capital letters, Councilmember Bon Giovanni?
Yes.
So, this is actually something that has been included in this policy all along.
Right.
And the only amendment is, but not a second time for the same cause.
Right. Whether it's new or not new, it's, I think it's still wrong.
You want it removed. Okay.
And Mayor, Councilmember Bon Giovanni, just to clarify, that, that addition of not a second time for the same clause comes from the statute. So, there's a statute that says council has authority to do so if they so choose to put it in their code like it has been, but you can't use this as a tool to remove someone for every council meeting in perpetuity. So, that's why the statute has that limitation. Council, if you choose to have this right, you can't abuse it, you can use it one time for one cause and that's it.
And so, Chris, you just said that in state statute, it says that cities and towns are allowed to add this to their policies, but they don't, it's not required, like communications from citizens?
That, that's correct. It's something the council has adopted and I think goes back to 1984, but there's nothing that requires the council to keep that provision in.
Just wanted to clarify, thank you. And you, you said for the same, you said clause, but it says cause in our, it's cause? Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify. Thank you. Councilmember Buckley?
Okay, so I want to go back to the time limits. And I believe that's Section 192, 192B2, correct? Where, you know, it's giving, I, I want to, what I want to make sure is that if we, and, and I'm okay with, with this going after communications.
You mean after public hearing and consent?
Public hearings, yeah. But I want to make sure that all of these things are totally stricken out of here because it still reads, how are we going to vote on that? Because it still reads 20 or fewer total speakers, three minutes, and it goes down 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 different items. Are we, can we make sure that when we vote on this, those are stricken out?
That's what the discussion is right now, council member. So, we're deciding if to, if we're going to, but the, what I'm hearing is if we're going to strike those items, that we would move communications from citizens to after public hearing and consent. So, it would mean approving a new format for our agenda too.
Okay.
But those would be stricken.
And they still get the three minutes?
And they still get the three minutes.
With no restrictions other than three minutes? Okay.
Yes. Any other different sections that we haven't covered yet? I just want to double check before we move on. Because I'm going to try and tackle this one at a time, okay? I think. Or do you want to try, Councilmember? Okay, Councilmember Tilke?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I want to thank everybody for the hard work on this. And I'd also like to acknowledge the following citizens for their assistance over the past year as we evaluated our meeting procedures to ensure they not only meet First Amendment rights, but also provide the public with clear guidelines to address our town council. And those citizens are Dr. Brandon Riff, Mr. Ryan Handelsman, and Ms. Joanne Terry. And with that, I'd like to try to attempt a motion based on our conversation that we made. So, I would like to-
Excuse me, Councilmember Tilke? If it would be beneficial, it sounds like the thought, at least on this section, the communications from citizens, is to make a pretty significant change to what's in the packet. I put together, I think, what the council may want, and we could substitute that section in. I'll, I'll put it on the screen so you can take a look. And that way, the motion can include that section if you, we can modify the language as needed. I think it'd be easier for the clerk's office to know what, what the actual language is.
Perfect.
And the other thought is if you're going to change the order of the meeting, one consideration would be if you're looking at a public hearing items and consent, recommendation would be to include administrative items as well.
Yes.
Because that's all the three items that council votes on, which includes policy because they'll be combined, and then the rest of the agenda. So, that's just a recommendation on that.
Okay. I'll wait for you to put it up there, see if I can do this.
Should we vote on these separately so we're on the record? No?
No, it's, my opinion is as long as Councilmember Tilke captures it in the motion, I think fine. Because it's still the same document, we're still dating, voting on the one same thing. Oh, boy. Okay.
So, this section is the original section that's been in the code. Obviously, the strike throughs are what would be removed, and then the all caps is the new language that would be added. This is my attempt based on your conversation. You just had to keep the same system, but still making some of the tweaks, I think, to make it go in line with the council's current practice, including removing the very end, that 15-minute cap. It's always been there, that's never been enforced.
It's my understanding though that we were going to list it as three minutes each. I don't-
We, we, it is, it is in there?
Oh, I see it. I found it, thanks.
Yeah, that's the original language.
Okay, so we didn't have to change that. Okay. All right, now I got to figure out how to say that. All right. So, I'd like to make a motion to, I don't know why I'm so-
I want to make sure I'm, Mayor, on the-
She's going to go through one at a time. Oh, we are, okay.
Yeah, I'm hoping to, yeah. I'd like to make a, a motion, can I say item 36 instead of reading the whole quote?
Sure.
Okay. To, to approve item 36 with the following changes. Remove Section 1-91A. That's this section that deals with removing a council member?
I have that as 1-90.
90, okay, sorry.
Sorry, I have that as 1-90A.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
So, B, so B would become A.
Yes.
And it actually would be the entire Section 1-90.
Oh, because it's-
Because B, B, subsection B refers to that.
So, the whole section would be removed.
The whole section would be-
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. To, I'll start again. To remove Section 190 in its entirety, to make an, amend Section 192 order of business as outlined on the screen. Can I do it that way? Okay. And to change the order on 190. I'm looking at, sorry, my notes showed the other one. So, the order of business is 4D? Okay. Okay. To, to change to, I'll just read it. Call it to order roll call, presentations, proclamations, public hearings, consent agenda, administrative items, consent, I mean, communications from citizens, future meetings, communications from town manager, council mayor, and adjournment. I think those were the changes.
In one, in Section 1-92, did you state to remove item 2B?
So, all of this gets removed and replaced?
And replaced it.
Okay, that's what I, I just want to confirm that. And what's on the back of the page as well? Correct?
Yep.
Okay. All right, thank you. I, I wanted to, I'd like a moment to read through this, if we could, maybe all take a moment to read that?
So, I'm just going to make one clarification before. We don't have a second yet, so we have a motion on the dais, the Councilmember Tilke with those changes. There was also a request for the adding items to the agenda and that they would be added in the, within the next two meetings. And I didn't hear that amended?
That wasn't my-
Wasn't part of your motion?
It's not my-
It's not part of your motion? Okay.
It's not part of my motion.
Okay.
Okay, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, in, in reading this, you know, it talks about, you know, if they want to donate their time, they, they can combine their comment card. And it says such remarks shall be limited to three minutes unless different time is granted by the council. What does that do? And does that say the council, is that saying that the council can still change the three minutes?
No, I think what we'd want to add there is if you're combining your time, the total would be six minutes. We did agree to that, I believe, at the last meeting. So, can you add that in there?
That, okay.
Yeah, thank you.
That's not what, what, what my concern was, is that this can, this three- That's not what, what, what my concern was, is that this can, this three minutes can, can be changed by the council, still.
It simply spells out our legal rights, but that doesn't mean that we would take those rights unless there was some extreme circumstances.
Yeah, just think of it as, we're not gonna, if they're combining their cards, we're not gonna reduce the time from three minutes, we're gonna increase the time.
No, that's not, that's not what I was refer, referring from. But as long as we know, maybe add only when necessary, or-
The council still has the option, if necessary, to change the time. I think for safety's sake, for this council, I, I know you all feel very strongly about keeping it for three minutes, but I really believe that there should be some statement that says if a situation arises, that you can still amend the time.
How about with a super majority?
Yes, I was just gonna say exactly that. Yeah, but we'd have to have a super majority vote in order to change that.
I think, Chris, you'll need to make some changes there if, so the one is a combined time, the maximum would be six minutes, and the statement that deals with the different time would need to be voted on by a super majority. Does that make sense?
It does. Does what I just put in there deal with the six minutes for a group? Is that sufficient?
Is it where your card person is?
Yeah, it's right before in such event. I just basically copied, I can actually change this. I gotta move this to all caps.
I thought we were in agreement, so otherwise we would've spent more time on a-
I thought we were in agreement coming in this evening, too. I'm apologizing to staff and the audience for- wordsmithing from the dais is never a great way to do business in the community. And so what we're doing right now, we could just postpone this item to the next meeting and have more time to look at it and be able to let Chris actually work with the recommendations and suggestions that we've come with tonight and bring it back to the next meeting. We're just talking two weeks, but-
Mayor, I'd rather get it-
You wanna get it done?
We've, I, I've been working on this for well over a year.
I know.
Two years, and I'm ready. So the only changes that we've made, and I know I've already made a motion, is that we removed the limitations based on number of requests to speak, and we kept the three minutes. We've added that if you combine your, your comments, you get six minutes. If we should decide as a council we need to change that, we would have to have a super majority vote. So that's, that's really the changes that have been made. The change in the order of the, the agenda to accommodate these changes, I think, was agreed upon, and that basically is just moving the communications from citizens after the, the business of the town so that we would have the time to hear from everybody without feeling pressure to get the business of the town done. And those were the only changes that were made.
For everything, or just?
Oh, and remove, I'm so sorry, and remove the, the statement that had to do with-
Expulsion.
Expulsion.
The section.
The section, yeah.
The section, section one ninety.
Yep.
That's Councilmember Tilke's motion.
What about, what did we decide on the, on time period for study sessions? No change?
This is, if you find it's a problem, we can bring it back.
I'll agree with it, okay.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm, I'm happy to do that if it's a problem.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Tilke. Would anyone like to second that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second by vice mayor. Do we have more questions or comments on the motion as made? No? Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Tilke, seconded by vice mayor. Please vote. And the motion passes seven zero. That concludes, I have to change out my stuff here, concludes our public hearing portion of our agenda, moving to our administrative items. Item thirty-seven, council administration discussion possible action related to the status of the council's subcommittee on teen violence. Vice mayor?
I'll be very quick. We, we did wind up our last subcommittee meeting last week. I've got a file full of action items, which I'm thankful to you all out there that submitted those at that meeting. We are planning to meet next Tuesday, I think it is. We're going to, we blocked out three hours, was it three hours? Three hours to actually write a report that we intend to present to the council on the sixteenth.
Yes, thank you. Part of being a subcommittee of three is you have to be able to meet again to come to a conclusion to bring it back to the council. Councilmember Banjirani?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank all the community members who participated over the number of months with us. It was a really good process, going from anger to listening to ideas, and more recommendations were being made every week, and, and I was very proud to serve on that.
I, I heard that the MIAC students attended the last meeting, and a couple of them spoke and were quite impressive. I was at another event that evening, and I'm very proud of them. They are a very impressive group of high schoolers from fourteen high schools. Fourteen high schools we have with the MIAC students, and I'm just always so impressed with them, so really proud that they were there and able to share their thoughts, too.
Yeah, they submitted some written comments.
Oh, did they?
Yes, they did.
Oh, good, that's good. They're, you know, they're the ones that, that are being talked about, and so it's, it's very important that, that where they're heard from, too. Councilmember Torgason?
I just want, I believe the young lady's name was Julia, and she was extremely well-spoken. And it was, that was just great to hear. The whole process has been very enlightening into other areas that I wouldn't have anticipated, but that young lady was very impressive to me.
Thank you. She participated in Student Government Day last year and was mayor or vice mayor or mayor? I see Kirsten's head over there. She was vice mayor last year, and then she decided to participate in MIAC this year, and she came back, of course, to do Student Government Day, and she worked with the digital team, because I believe her major and minor are going to be communications and poli sci? Poli sci. So I'm really impressed by her, she's a wonderful young lady. Thank you for the update. We look forward to more information at our next meeting. Now, moving on to item thirty-eight, consider adoption of the amended council meeting schedule for calendar year 2024, amending the July thirtieth date to August sixth and the August thirteenth date to August twentieth. Due to the change in the primary election this year that was supposed to be held on August sixth, that was moved to July thirtieth, it affected our August meeting calendar. And so I put, I asked Chevelli at our last meeting to make sure that we had this on our agenda to adjust, and when we looked at adding August sixth, then we realized August thirteenth would just be the next week, and we needed to actually push it out two weeks. So I would move to approve this change. And seconded by Councilmember Buckley, please vote. Mine didn't go, there we go. Motion passes seven zero. Moving to our policy items, does anybody have anything that they'd like to bring up? Future meetings? Seeing none, moving to communications, report from the town manager.
Thank you, mayor, members of the council. I've got a few things I'll run through for you tonight. I'll give them just a second to pull up some slides. Trying, getting professional.
In me.
No, if they can, if they just wanna advance. Yeah, you can just advance. Okay. Just real quick, I wanted to start with a huge thank you to everybody who made the LPGA event in Gilbert last weekend, in last week, a success. It involved members from fire and rescue, police, parks and recreation, economic development, digital government, just a huge portion of our, our organization that came together to make that such a success. What I'm showing you tonight, if you did not see it, we had a commercial that ran during the event, and that went out to a national and international audience, so that, please. Yeah, and that was great work by Dan Henderson, his, his entire team in tourism, as well as Oscar, who's one of our video journalists. Okay, next, if we wanna advance to the next slide, we would like to congratulate Kelly Elliott, who is Earth Day Award recipient, presented by Sunland Village. I'll go on to the next slide. And then, great work to the development services team. They, Gilbert received a community rating system upgrade from a class seven community to a class six. This upgrade results in an additional five percent discount to the existing fifteen percent discount, for a total of twenty percent for those that need flood insurance in our town. Next slide. And that's it. Okay, thank you, mayor.
No next slide.
No next slide.
Um, report from the council. Who's first?
I'll go first.
Councilmember Banjirani.
All right, so here are a few parks and rec happenings for tonight's council meeting. Gilbert Outdoor Expo, put on your camouflage and boots and head over to the Gilbert Outdoor Expo on February, February twenty-sixth.
I was gonna say that was last month.
That was last one. Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Okay, someone else go until I find the right one, okay?
Who else? Councilmember Buckley.
All right, I, first of all, I'm so cold, I think my teeth are chattering, so I have some nice fun little tourism things to, to read to you guys tonight. So first one is the Small Wonders Map Community Scavenger Hunt, and hopefully a lot of you have already heard about that. As a part of the Discover Gilbert and Local First Arizona Small Wonders Map Partnership, a community scavenger hunt launched in the Heritage District this past March. The goal of this program was to drive visitors and residents to featured merchants and to community points of interest through a fun, interactive, and ongoing series. I believe you can probably find that information out online as well. The next item is Discover Gilbert, Arizona Office of Tourism. The Discover Gilbert team will be attending Arizona Office of Tourism Trade and Media Roundtable this week, which will focus on joint initiatives for fiscal year 2025. Including in discussions will be a session focused on Arizona visitor trends and forecast. And lastly, and there will be no more after this, is American Tours International Visit. So Discover Gilbert recently welcomed the vice president of product from American Tours International, one of North America's leading service providers within the escorted tour market. I had to read that several times before, before I decided I was, it was okay to read. So the purpose of this visit was to showcase Gilbert as a potential Phoenix area stop on one of their Western Region tours, make introductions with Gilbert Hotel Partners, and to have Gilbert highlighted as a destination for their leisure travel, travelers. Keep in mind, you know, this is all through the Economic Development Department, and all of, all of these things I read about, and all, some of them are fun, but they all bring in money for the town and for the Economic Development Department and, and the tourism. So thank you very much for listening. I'm glad we have a bigger audience tonight.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Banjirani?
All right, take two. Okay. Here are a few parks and recreation happenings for this week's council meeting. Gilbert Global Village, the Gilbert Global, Global Village will take place on Saturday, April sixth, on the, on the Gilbert Civic, Civic Center lawn, from nine AM to two PM. The festival is free multicultural celebration for all ages, focusing on creating a safe and respectful environment where authentic connections thrive. Opinions are equally valued, allyship is encouraged, and differences are shared and celebrated. Hey, come on down to April Pools' Day Swim Party. Kick off swim season by attending the April Pools, Pools' Day on April, on April sixth from eleven AM to two PM at the Biscuit Aquatic Center. Gilbert Parks and Recreation is partnering with Gilbert Fire and Rescue to bring a free, fun event where kids can learn about water safety while having a blast doing it. This, there will be games, music, vendors, and food trucks to enjoy that event. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Torgason?
But wait, there's more. The northwest area of Gilbert is one of the most mature areas in the community, and for the past ten years, Gilbert has been actively evaluating opportunities to revitalize the area to ensure the area remains a vibrant place to live, work, and play. Last Wednesday, a public meeting was hosted for the Northwest Gilbert Revitalization Effort, and over two hundred residents attended the meeting to learn more about the establishment of a redevelopment area and to provide feedback on where efforts for revitalization should occur. We encourage residents to visit www.gilbertaz.gov backslash NWGilbert to learn more about the Northwest Gilbert Revitalization and/or to provide feedback. And I was there, I believe a majority of the council was there, and there was well over two hundred people there, and it was really nice to see true public engagement. I was very impressed by how many people were, were there to learn, participate, and be part of it. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Tilke?
Thanks, mayor. Just want another shout out to our team and for the LPGA coming to Gilbert, and this is Ford's first signature event, and they chose Gilbert, Arizona, to bring it here, and hopefully we'll have many more. But I just wanna do a quick shout out to two little girls that I met, and I talked with their parents, Leila Mansky and Peyton Wilson. They were sitting there for the entire tournament and collecting signatures on posters and boards, and they were telling me how they were interested in golfing in the future, and I just thought it was such a wonderful event to encourage girls to golf in the future. So thanks for the opportunity to be there.
I wanna mention one more thing about, about the golf tournament. I was at a friend's house whose backyard is, is the golf course, and it was really strange watching it on TV and then turning over to the right and seeing the exact same thing happening in real life. It was, it was kinda cool.
Any other updates? Seeing none, I'll move on to updates for myself. I wanted to help, do we have a slide for Slip Into Spring? Ashley, thank you.
So I'm, I'm not gonna lie, I sent Dan Henderson, our Economic Development Director, an email today and said, I thought this was an April Fool's joke. When we got this email that said Slip Into Slide and that these big bananas were in downtown Gilbert. And he said he, you know, he could see why I might think that. So these larger-than-life bananas are in downtown Gilbert, starting April first through May second, visitors to Gilbert's Heritage District can plan for bunches of fun. Do I owe the money to the jar now? Somebody wrote this for me, they owe the money. When they check out downtown's new public art installation, Slip Into Spring. This installation features a banana-themed rest stop with a mushroom crank-powered music box featuring the sounds of Gilbert's own Gilbert Symphony Orchestra. This pop-up experience is set up on Hearn Way, east of Gilbert Road, under the hoop lights. The community is encouraged to share their social media posts and photos with friends and family to encourage visitation to the district and, and tag hashtag Discover Gilbert. So what a fun way to slip into spring in downtown Gilbert.
And monkey around at the same time.
Oh, now you owe money. Last week, I was honored to serve as the judge for the 2024 National Civics Bee hosted by the Gilbert Chamber of Commerce. The students were from sixth, seventh, and eighth grades in the East Valley, and the top four will now participate in the statewide civics bee, and the winner-
will now participate in the statewide civics be, and the winners from the state be will head to Washington DC for the national be. So good luck to the four students that will be representing the Gilbert Chamber of Commerce in the East Valley. And already mentioned tonight, were a couple of events that are going on, but there is a post on Gilbertaz.gov called Free Things to Do in Gilbert This April, so please visit our website, Gilbertaz.gov, and visit the link that talks about the events such as the Global Village Festival and April Pools' Day this coming Saturday. And then a couple of weekends ago, I participated in the Second Annual In Their Boots Event, where we wore, wore combat boots and walked a mile in their shoes from the American Legion up Gilbert Road and then back to the American Legion. But before we started the walk, I had this gentleman come up to me and take me by the hands and gave me a big hug, and he said, I just want to thank you for the Gilbert Police Department. He has PTSD, and he lost his wife, and whomever the officer was that was with him realized that he was struggling in the moment, and the officer stayed with him for five hours to make sure that that man was okay. And those are the stories that everybody doesn't get to hear. Those are the great stories that I get to hear, and, you know, we both teared up, and I wished him well, and he's just, he was just a wonderful little man, and thank you to our Gilbert Police Department for supporting our veterans in that way and, and our residents in that way. So that's all I have. I will, oh, nope, I have one more thing that I almost forgot. Councilmember Kaprowski had a birthday, and so we have a card for you, and there are cookies back there, and Councilmember Buckley tried to bust into the cookies earlier. And she did, when we sat down. So happy birthday, Councilmember Kaprowski, and now I will, we, we haven't started this process yet, but I will take a motion to adjourn. Mayor, Councilmember Buckley also had a birthday. She didn't want us to mention it. But we're very close in birthdays. I was told not to say anything, so I was trying not to. Thank you, yes, thank you. Thank you, happy birthday to both of you. I'll take a motion to adjourn. I have a motion by Councilmember Tilke, a second by Councilmember Banji, Buckley, all those in favor? Aye. Good night, everyone.